All right. Are you guys ready on the Facebook? Okay. All right, let's go ahead and call this city council budget work session to order if we can all rise for the pledge of allegiance. Doing roll call, we have everyone present except for Luke Merrill will be absent tonight and Steve Lundin will be joining us shortly. Do we have any public comment? Hearing none, I'll look for a motion to adopt the agenda.
Motion is down.
Second. I have a motion from Councilman Heeman and a second from Councilman Collison, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side. Motion carries three zero. Moving on to our work session item F1. Scenario one for the budget.
So the work session tonight here, we're basically trying to narrow it down to one of the three remaining scenarios. That then subsequently would get approved tonight, so we've got a preliminary levy that we can report to the county and hence then the state by September 30th. And remember is that tonight really the only committal thing is is that whatever the levy gets set at, you cannot go above.
If we can let the record show that Councilman Lundin is with us at 5:03 there. So did you want to kind of run through the all three scenarios or you want to?
Yeah, I think what we do, what I'll do is I'm actually some of the best summary material is probably within the council packet. So I just printed them out, I'm just going to hand out these two sheets. And it's in the council packet, but maybe it just makes it easier to make sure we're all on the same page. The one page is just the summary of the very abbreviated summary of the general fund budget. And then also has the levy components beneath and the tax rate and tax rate change at the bottom. The second page is just the very brief summary of the three scenarios. And kind of where we, you know, kind of the high points, so to speak. So scenario one is would be the scenario that I've been working with the mayor on, he's come in a couple of times. Kind of the big things there is is that we've gotten freeze on all 920 expenditures, so basically. Cueing up nothing in 2024 except for a few items, everything else just pushed back to 2025 and beyond. We still do have, for scenario one, we still have lighting infill. Yeah, we still have lighting infill, two PD squads, we've got the Cambridge I Santee bike walk trail, which that's a contractual deal that we've already signed up for 7,500 bucks a year. And then we did talk about also putting the greater back in. Scenario one has no seasonals or interns, does increase the liquor store transfer, but maintains a net cash flow at the end of the year of 100,000 bucks if we were to hit the budget right on. Public works facility moves out 20 years, but we did move the salt shed back into 2024 then in discussions with the mayor. This, that scenario also has us removing the NeoGov HR software. There had been some discussion between the packet management software and the HR software. Basically. The packet management software is a little more transparent for the residents and more useful in that regard. And either case, staff's recommendation is if we're going to pick one, pick get rid of the HR one, and that one happens to be a thousand dollars more per year anyway, so that works out fine. And then the last change would be is that we roll 7,500 into fund 438 annually for 10 years to get that negative account balance taken care of, which is the obligation of the general fund, no matter how it, no matter how we do it. Scenario two is. I guess this would be like, like my scenario six from last time, kind of my suggested compromise, sort of, you know, kind of the halfway, halfway point, so to speak. Here, public works facility and salt shed go out 10 years, and we do 7,500 toward annually for 10 years toward fund 438 to get that account balance taken care of. No admin, water sewer and EDCD interns. We'd remove the NeoGov software and then we'd increase the transfer for the liquor store again, but maintain that 100,000 dollar cash flow. And then the third scenario was just some tweaks is very much what we had talked about originally back in July, is kind of the original. Fund 920 stays exactly as it was, full complement of seasonals and interns, liquor store transfer remains at 350, which is what it had historically been. The NeoGov software stays and we would take care of fund 438 in full, transferring the full 75,000 out. So that's those three scenarios on the one page, and then the next page is where you see that summary. This is the very basic category summary of the general fund budget at the top half. In between the summary budget at the top and the preliminary levy debt at the bottom, there is a contribution to fund balance. Contribution to fund balance in scenario one is 120,000. Scenario two is about 180,000, and then scenario three does not have a dedicated contribution to fund balance. Tax rate change for scenario one has us down 9%. Scenario two, four and a half, and scenario three, just a smidge underholding perfectly steady at the current tax rate. And incidentally, this, I should maybe make this super clear. This, the summary page where we have the very, very summarized version of the preliminary budget, just by department, real elections, council, administration, that kind of thing, and the levy at the bottom. If we were to choose one of these options, these, this is literally the data that would go into the two otherwise blank resolutions at the council meeting. So this is, I mean, to just clearly understand this data on one resolution, this data on the next. And so that is why that's presented that way, so that it would be clear at the council meeting that everybody understands exactly what they're voting for and exactly what is going to be placed into those otherwise blank resolutions.
So I spent a lot of time with Mike kind of going through these things, so I, I don't have a whole lot of questions, I kind of know, I mean, obviously him and I worked on scenario one, you know, together quite a bit. I mean, what I tried to do with Mike and he was gracious enough to take the time to work through this with me, but, you know, I know that the greater was a big item of concern that we had talked about. You know, since we've got that deal with, with Forest Lake that we want to follow through on that, and so we moved that back into, into this budget. And then the, I know for Luke, it was the, you know, the salt shed was another big item that he was concerned about, and I know that it makes sense to, to get it done sooner than later, of course, and. So we moved that back into this year as well, actually, we moved it ahead a year, I think, from what it was originally planned, because it would have been 2025 with the public works building, so. So we were able to do that, and I think that kind of addresses some of the big concerns that, that were out there, and then I know that, you know, another thing that I personally was really passionate about, and I think, I think George is probably on board with that as well, that the number one concern for us was. You know, reducing that, that tax rate to get to where we're seeing no increase in actual dollars that are being paid by, by the city residents. And that, that 9% reduction takes care of that. So to me, that scenario makes the most sense, I think it, it covers a lot of the things that everybody was concerned about and still gets it done. But, you know, what do you guys think? Do you have questions?
I personally think that, that plow truck needs to be in there, that was ordered two years ago, and it's been delayed and delayed and delayed.
Yeah.
Something happens to that damn truck, it's going to cost us a lot more money than that.
You can pretty much rough estimate, they probably have been going up 15 to 20 grand a year on costs on plow trucks.
Yeah.
Last three, four years.
Yeah, the price has gone up since we ordered it, it's actually three years ago we ordered the truck and it, they won't honor that price anymore. I don't know what current pricing is, but it, that price has gone up.
What's the approximate price on that plow truck?
Couple hundred thousand, I think.
I want to say all, all total outfitted, I think 262 is where we're at most recently.
Yeah, I would say under three, yeah.
130?
Under 300, yes.
Oh, under 300.
And we're still talking about getting that next year, I mean, it's, it's just pushing it back one year is all we're talking about with that scenario.
Yeah, if you push it back to 2025, you won't, you won't get it. It'll go to another city.
And then, then we're stuck waiting again.
Yep, then you'll wait again.
When you order something and you cancel it, they don't have a tendency to be gracious for you on the next time around. I personally think, I think this scenario two is, is the route to go, and I think that, and keeping that plow truck in there. You, you won't realize, one time, one time, the street doesn't get cleaned in a proficient manner, your phone will ring off the hook by. Two thirds of the city residents.
Yeah, and if they have a truck down. Then it really throws a wrench in the whole system.
And I also think those seasonal workers have made it possible for the city to save a lot of money, just like you brought up those, those water meter project. That's because regular staff was doing that, and our, and our seasonals were picking up their slack and taking care of all this other stuff that needed to get done, that couldn't, wouldn't have got done otherwise. It's, two of those guys are worth. A full-time employee, and it's less money than a full-time employee. Seasonal staff is, is a huge asset for the city, it saves the city a lot of money in the long run.
The street lighting on here, that's the infill basically, right, that we've been doing?
Yeah, it's, it's just infill, it's not the, the, you know, because we do, we do replacement of existing and then we do infill, those are two different items, this is just infill.
56,000 is just infill. Under street lighting, under here, right?
Oh, on, on that part, you're seeing basically that's utilities.
Oh, okay.
On that portion. The, the stuff that's in 920, it's roughly 10 to 11,000 per year for each of the, for replacement or infill, rough math.
What we did have in there was 10,927, which was presented as infill, and then there was another 9, 200 for replacement, this is just the infill part, probably 11,000.
There's, there's only one council member up your nose that I've been, one of the most passionate people about that infill light, I've been on that since I've been on council.
And that's the only thing I could see that maybe you, you could maybe push back a year with like scenario two.
And we could, but for right now, we're sitting in the preliminary budget. Doesn't mean that necessarily it's still going to be at that 4.54, it could go up, it could, that could change.
But it can't go up.
I mean, but the, the, the change, the negative amount could go up to five, six, seven percent, whatever, by tweaking things and, and seeing what's more appropriate. But for, for all intents purposes, this is just, this is not written in stone, we just can't go any higher than this.
When does that plow truck have to be ordered by?
It is already.
It already is, I mean.
It, it was, it was ordered three years ago, it's taken, we will get it hopefully by next June, when we would finally get the truck.
So we got till June to find 300,000, I think we can do it?
It's already been budgeted for. The money's there for it.
Money was budgeted three years ago for it.
Yeah.
And so how that practically works is then we just keep pushing it forward, right? So when I know I'm not taking delivery in 2020, move it to 2021. Well, now I know I'm not taking delivery in 2021, move it to 2022. And for plow trucks, you also have to do that because you keep, you keep losing out on your state contract, you have to move to the next pricing range, right? They'll rebid those annually, and so that's, that's the other.
But if we go with scenario one, we can still cut more budget by June, right? We just can't go over.
That's why I'm saying.
So that's why I said, we have till June to find 300,000, I think it's very doable.
December 5th is.
You don't need to find it, it's already there.
Well, in scenario two.
So Mike, if, if that is already there then, so I mean, is that, is that the case that we could move that back in without seeing an increase then in this, in this levy amount?
Not, not against scenario one.
Right. So it's not.
Yeah, because we've, because in scenario one, we've recalibrated the, the future forecast for 920 levies.
Right.
I'm just saying, as we're setting this preliminary budget, we can possibly cut more out in scenario two, we're just setting it, we can't go any higher than that. We can go lower, we just can't go higher. I'd rather set the bar here and work down than try to set the bar here and really cut our corners and have a bigger, major issue.
Let's say crazy scenario, we set, we set it low right now, they have a major piece of equipment failure in the next month, or a squad car gets wrecked or whatever. We can't raise it to cover that oops.
I don't, I get it.
You get what I'm saying?
I'd rather, I'd rather set the bar a little higher, you know, scenario three, I, I'm not at all for that at all, even though it's still lowering, it's still keeping us flat, which is always a good thing. But still by decreasing it by four and a half percent, we could probably gain a couple, two more percent on that as, as before, we have to actually sit. It's in stone, right now, it's not in stone, we just can't go over that dollar amount. I'd rather set the bar high and work down than try to set the bar low and try to make it work. If there's an oops that happens.
And I'm arguing that I think the residents want lower taxes, I mean, I, I hear all the time, I mean, people are so supportive of the effort to lower their taxes, and they're sick and tired of paying more than they feel like they should, and they've, and. And when we get to that 9% reduction, that gets us to the point where we know they're not going to, in real, actual dollars, they're not going to pay more than they did this year, and we, we already lowered the rate 10% this year, so we're doing another 9% here now to keep up with the rate of, of inflation and the rate of, of the value of the homes increasing. I mean, that, I think we need to say, okay, the residents want this, how do we make it work and, and cause the, the least amount of pain for us as a city, as a city hall as possible? I don't think we should say, well, what do we want as a city hall, and then how do we make it hurt the least amount as possible for our residents? I think that's the wrong way to think about it, we got to say, our residents want this, how do we go from that point and still make everything work? And I think that's why we should commit to that today with scenario one, and if we can find a way to work some of these things back in, then so be it. But I think, I think we need to commit to that 9% to make sure that they're not paying more in taxes.
Well, I, I, I disagree with that, because everybody I've talked to, they don't want to see everything slashed to the point where.
We're not, we're not slashing everything.
You are bare-boning the city, yes you are.
We're continuing with lighting infill, we're continuing with two PD squads, the Cambridge I Santee bike trail, we're still doing the greater, which was the, the one big concern that you guys had mentioned. We're still doing the salt shed, we're still doing, we're not, we're not cutting it bare bones at all.
Well, I think you are, when you're cutting out seasonal workers, you're going to end up overstaffing our people.
Mike and I had looked at one option where we were looking at a 17% decrease, now that didn't, didn't flow well.
This doesn't flow well with me either, and it doesn't flow with most, most everybody I've talked to.
How can it not flow well, when you, when you look at this year going down that 8.97%, and then every year after that, we're basically holding even, holding steady with maybe some slight decreases and, and, you know, there's one year here where it's 2.61%, and we'll be able to, to hammer that out after. But we're talking about reducing this rate 10% this year, 9% next year, and then being able to hold that rate. Without any trouble, and you can see it, how can, well, then you're saying Mike's math is wrong? Because I'm, I'm looking at the damn thing right now.
Right, but you can't, there's, there's things in there that we need, the city needs, the residents need, you can't just cut them and kick the can down the road.
We're not kicking the can down the road, we've got everything that they need.
You're already talking about kicking the plow truck down the road. Okay, so.
We're just talking about moving it one year.
Yep, that one year could cost the residents another 30, 40 grand.
It, it, and that's if nothing happens, if nothing happens to the truck.
And it also could push the truck out, three more years.
Even if it breaks down, we're, we're, even in scenario one, we're talking about 120,000 to fund balance contribution too, so that even in a rainy day situation, we're not only, we're not only lowering the tax rate 9%, we're also saying we're going to contribute to fund balance. I mean, we're saving for a rainy day as we do this at the same time, so.
Well, we did that before with pavement management plan, and it's came back and bite this whole council in the hind end, because we had to put a lot more money back into it because it was all stripped and dropped. And that's doing the same thing, just in a different form.
No, it's not.
Yes, it is.
We're keeping up with our pavement management plan, that's not anything.
Oh, okay, so now you're using the pavement, I use that as a scenario, I'm not just saying the pavement management.
You're talking about the pavement management plan when, when they had those rough times in 2008, and they said, okay, we're just going to stop completely managing our, our roads, I mean, that is one of the essential functions of a city government, is to make sure that roads are taken care of, water, police, fire, those are the basics.
I use that as an example, I'm not saying that we did that, but when we did, when that happened, back then, we're still paying for that problem today by doing that.
I agree.
And when you strip, I don't care what you want to strip.
Talking about like, what was it, from 08 to 2018, basically, that they had kind of skipped out on the pavement management project? Or part of it, was about 10 years, just pushing it back and pushing it back.
We are, we are still working on projects that were identified originally in 2010, presented in 2012, and never got completed, never even got started, we're still working on those.
But when you start stripping funds from other things like that, when you start stripping funds from other things like that, freezing wages. You won't have any employees if you start freezing wages, second of all.
Where in this plan are we freezing wages?
You said freeze, you said, you'd said from your scenario one, you were freezing all wages, originally.
920. And freeze all, all new hires is what I did say, I didn't say freeze wages.
So what are you going to do when, when the staff says, you're overworking me, I'm done, I'm going to work someplace else? You're not going, when you freeze all new hires, you're freezing that hire of that new person, essentially.
That didn't end up making it into this final scenario.
But I, it doesn't matter, I don't want to see.
If you read the page in front of you, nowhere on there does it say freeze all new hires, does it?
I don't, I don't agree with scenario one, period. Scenario two is a better thing to start with.
Don't, don't put facts out there that are not facts, you don't just get to make up the facts.
Whatever, you know, whatever, you say and talk like this, but you've never had to try to deal with straightening that mess out that was not just pavement management, there was other funds that were cut that we're still paying for because of that action to lower taxes to.
What funds?
There was plenty of other things, George, I can't remember, that's five, six, seven years ago, but we've still been struggling with taking care of a business and getting, find 920 fund that you want to keep putting back in that fund balance, we're still struggling because that was stripped. And if it was never stripped from that, we wouldn't have that struggle with that question.
I don't see any funds we're stripping.
Plow truck, number one.
Well, I, I've said my piece, so it doesn't matter.
If it breaks down and it costs 50 grand to fix, it's, it's a way better scenario than 300,000 this year.
You know what they get for a plow truck on trade?
I'm sure that can vary.
It'd be less than what it would cost to fix the plow truck typically.
I think it just all comes down to the residents want us to lower taxes.
I agree.
And that is what I intend to do.
But, you know, we're not the only people, the city is not the only tax.
You guys always want to bring up the county and the, and the school board, why, why is that?
There are residents that go to those meetings.
We're only responsible for the city portion of it, not the county.
Logan is behind my head here.
Exactly.
It's I Santee.
Yep.
We don't work for the county, we don't work for the school board, we can't control what they do, but we can control what we do.
No, you can't.
Yeah, I can't control what the county.
You never said you could.
Well, then why do you guys always bring that up?
Because that is a good portion of why our taxes have been increasing, it's not necessarily I Santee's side of it.
If we, even if the rate stays the same as in scenario three, you're going to pay the 8.8% more because of the, the value of homes increasing on that average, so. I know there's some other entities, and I think the county was one of them, I don't know if anybody's heard what they did today, but I think they, no, you haven't heard, I know that there was talk that they were going to basically keep the rate the same, which is good progress, and they've got, you know, four out of their five commissioners are brand new, and they're still learning the lay of the land, and that's, and, and the county has a lot of stuff going on, I think that's the first time in 15 or 20 years that I heard that they were going to try to keep it at, at zero for an increase. But regardless of that, we're still paying more county taxes because it's at zero. What we're talking about is saying, no, we're not going to just take the easy way out and say, okay, yeah, we, we lowered your, your rate, you know, so much, no, we, but you're still paying more, sorry, that's not good enough. People are tired of that crap. They want to know in actual real dollars that they're going to, they're going to catch a break this year, and that we'll be able to maintain that rate, and that's what we've, we've done here. Yeah, would it be nice to have a brand new plow truck? Absolutely. But we are taking care of the salt shed, we're taking care of the greater, and we're still able to do these other things, I mean, it's, I, I think it's, you look at what's nice to have versus what is completely necessary to have.
I've been in the public works industry for over 20 years.
I know.
And we don't buy equipment because it's nice to have, we buy it because it's needed to serve the residents. When a piece of equipment is tired and broke down, you have to replace it. It's part of doing business.
Yes, and we're talking about one year.
Maybe that's why the county taxes are so high.
Dan works for Cambridge, but I don't think Cambridge is going to be lowering taxes anyway, would be my guess, I have no idea, but. But, anyway.
Well, I, like I stated, it's, it's, this is not a meeting to do a finalize, we're setting the levies that we cannot go over that amount. And by cutting ourselves short, I think we could still work, set the levy at scenario two balance, and we can change and tweak and make it work, and probably even lean towards more scenario one and still get your tax cuts. But, but sitting here and arguing, say you're going to set it right now, today at this, I think that's a mistake and a half. I, I just, what happens if this, does something happens?
We've never set.
What happens if one of, what, what happens if one of the wells go out, and we got to come up with them, oh, it comes from the water fund? And if the water fund doesn't have enough money to fund it, we can't just keep stripping this, or this, and this, and this, to make that always be that scenario. I'm using that as an example, not saying that's the fact, but I'm just saying is, what happens?
Mike, how much is in the water fund right now?
Hmm, that's a good question, but I'm sure it must be. I'm, I'm several months behind, but I want to say it was probably 3 million bucks, at least 1.8, about that.
How much does a well cost?
Just a straight, straight well, 1.2 probably.
I'm just saying, is, is by setting this, by no means are they, we telling them that's what that number's going to be. By setting that, we're just setting this bar, so in case we have to make other things work, where scenario one, we can't make it work that way, you're cutting yourself short and making that problem. It's too early to do that at this moment, but I think by setting this levy right now at scenario one, we can do better than that, I'm not saying that. But I'm just saying, just for what purpose this is about right now, by setting it at scenario one, it's in, it's way in between the two, we can always go, we can always cut other things here, cut other things there, cut other things there, we could probably get it pretty damn close to that without compromising things. without deprimiting things. I'm just saying we're setting that bar. Does not mean that's what it's going to be. It can't go over that, but if you set it at that and something happens, we're SOL.
I I I'm trying to find the merit of your your argument. It it doesn't matter whether we go with scenario one or two. The difference is a plow truck. If we go with scenario two, we buy the plow truck, we're in the exact same circumstance under your scenario if we go with scenario one. There's still.
I'm just saying by setting the levy, I'm not saying that's what it's going to be. I'm saying to set this levy, that's all we're doing. We that doesn't mean that's what it's going to be. What we do tonight is not the finalization. It's just setting a bar a little bit higher in case we do have to go above what scenario one is. All of a sudden, you gotta come up with X amount of dollars, and that changes that number. We can't go any higher than that levy set right now. If you set scenario one as our levy tonight, if something was to happen and we had to get quarter million dollars, we can't do it because it's set that at that point. I'm just using numbers. It's not saying that's what it is.
That's not that's not the case either, Steve.
Same same thing.
It's that's not the case either. If we had to get a quarter million dollars, we we have a fund balance, and we've also got a hundred and twenty thousand this year that we're gonna contribute to it, and currently it's at, well, it was forty-three percent for this year, so.
Both are missing my point.
But Steve, we are addressing your points. How are we missing it?
You're missing my point. This is just to set the levy. It is not what we're doing.
I understand that. Okay, you want me to address that?
Okay, you understand that.
I already addressed that because that the residents say enough is enough. We're they're tired of paying more taxes, and we need to live within our means, and our means is we lower it to nine nine percent, and then we find a way to make it work because that's what they want.
I agree. I don't think we should decide anyway tonight because we're short a council member, so.
But we have to. That's a problem.
Well, then set it high. We don't have to do a final till what, December?
Final is in December. It needs to be reported to the state by the twenty eighth, I think, of December. But you would generally could you would generally decide that at the first meeting in December, so you've got wiggle room, right, in case something would happen? God knows what. You would have a second meeting to get get a get a whack at that. But yeah. But if we if we if we find ourselves tonight in a situation where it's two-two, right, motion for for one, doesn't get enough, motion for another, doesn't get enough. There is no tiebreaker. It's then we have to call a special meeting, and that would have to be next week, and if it's next week, I can't promise that I will be able to attend any of those. I can attend next Monday if we get to that situation, but after that. And it will have to be next week. If we don't, if we don't submit a preliminary levy to the state through the county, your de facto preliminary levy is last year's levy. That's that's how states that's how statute's written, so.
But we'll have time still for a special meeting. If it is two to two, we'll be able to do the twenty-fifth we talked about, or maybe the twenty-sixth, so. But if Mike can't attend, we'll just have to deal with that, but.
Yep, Luke will be back by then.
But he'll be back by then, I would assume, so.
I'm just saying that we set it high, and we do not have to have a special meeting.
I understand that, Steve, and I.
And that's my point. Special meetings do cost us money.
Well, but so so does raising taxes. I I we're not I just I want to set I get what you guys are saying. You want to set it low. You want to set it in the medium range so that we can go down from there, and I want to say, no, we need to make sure that we're gonna go down from there, that we're gonna hit our goal, and we gotta do it today is my my plan. I'd like to do it today.
Well, what you want and what you really want to do.
We can work our way from there in December, but.
There's a lot there's a lot of things I want. It isn't gonna happen today, no matter what, personal business, whatever, city business, it doesn't matter. It doesn't always happen the way you want it to be. I don't care what you do. I just by setting it high, it gives us a lot of wiggle room. You you both of you two are not understanding that. You want to set a special meeting. It costs us money. These people do you may think because their salary, they still get comp time. They still get compensated for it. It still costs us money. Then when you have a special meeting, then you have to cost more money.
So why don't you just why don't you just plan on voting with George and I, and then we'll be fine?
Why don't you just plan on voting with you and me?
I don't know. I guess that I guess that's where we're gonna come down, so. So, yeah, no, that but I'm not gonna budge on it myself. I I I think we have to, and I understand what you're saying. I'm not saying I don't, that it's easier to you have more flexibility when you can you have wiggle room, but I don't want any wiggle room. The residents don't want any wiggle room. The residents have said enough is enough. They do not want to pay more taxes. And I say we work from the from the opposite way that we normally have done it. We've normally said, okay, the city wants this much, and how do we go get it from the residents? It's no, the residents are willing to pay this much. Now, how do we make it work as a city? That's how we need to go about this, and that's what scenario one does. Any other thoughts? Questions?
Hope I'm just gonna state publicly again, so taxpayers here, because I I get different information from residents than you do, so. Pushing off plow trucks is gonna cost taxpayers more money. I'm done saying my piece.
Anything else? George, you had mentioned something about the HSAs or?
Mike, can you explain the HSAs to me on your health insurance? I I totally don't understand that because I have an HSA.
What does that have to do with the budget?
It it's a lot of money in the health insurance for the administration, which I want them to have, and they got a great they got a great policy, but what I don't understand is I can only deduct three thousand a year, you know, that I can use towards taxes, and I can add an extra thousand because I'm over sixty. But when I look at it, it looks like for example, the liquor store manager makes fifty-seven thousand a year, but yet he gets thirty thousand a year in his HSA. That's what it looked like when I was looking at
that's.
The Excel that I got.
My without seeing what you're seeing, my suspicion is, one, liquor store manager is making more like eighty-six thousand, and the thirty thousand, if my guess would be is that you were looking at the total cost of health insurance. Total cost of health insurance. The HSA contributions are just set set to the IRS max, so individual is thirty-eight hundred maybe or something like that. And then family is roughly double.
Okay.
Yep. So this the vast majority is premiums. It's it's not a thirty thousand dollar contribution to the to an HSA. That's that's that's.
The health category that you see is not just HSA.
It well, it was marked a it was marked that, and that was the subgroup it was under, so it wasn't broke down to understand what it was, and that's why I wanted to ask that question. So wouldn't we be better off going on the exchange? Seriously, I'm just gonna ask it. If you go on the exchange and get an insurance policy, like I'm gonna use myself for an example, a high deductible, three thousand, almost seven hundred a month, okay? Now, there's nine thousand dollar a year. No, it's seven thousand out of pocket. So I'm looking at ten thousand plus a premium. I'm only at sixteen thousand, and I'm a hundred percent covered. I realize there's families that, you know, each each situation is different, but wouldn't it be cheaper doing that? Have you ever done the math?
Yeah.
If we were gonna cover everybody even a hundred percent, it almost seems cheaper going just going on the exchange.
Yeah, we bid we bid the health insurance on in non-contract years, yeah. Like, is it comes up between contracts? Yeah.
Now, you're gonna have to redo your health insurance contract here in the next month or two?
No, we are just we are we are getting our renewals. We've that is already committed.
I'd ask a question. It just I don't know. I've never thirty thousand dollars seems like a lot for health insurance for one person, even if they have a semi-large family. I'd like to see the little bit more detail so I can understand it.
Yeah, when we switched to to Peep, who's we're currently with, when we switched to Peep, we went to high deductible plans and did the max HSA contribution on behalf of the city. That change saved us at the time, that was in twenty eighteen, that saved us a hundred and forty thousand dollars. I mean, we actually we did pick up a giant chunk of change by making that switch because the previous to that being with the co-op was it was getting prohibitive. They were they were turning in thirty, forty percent renewals, and it was just not sustainable.
That was my question about that. I'd I'd still like to talk to you more about to understand it a little bit better, what exactly you're doing. I I don't want to cut healthcare healthcare insurance benefits at all, but I'd
Well, this it. The other thing.
Scenario where you're looking at the exchange and what you have and comparing them.
The other the other the other part of this too is is I don't have the health insurance renewals. That's what will come out roughly first week of October. So right now, I'm projecting twenty-five percent just because I can't project five and have it be twenty-five. That's too much to make up. So we're gonna, you know, roughly two, two and a half weeks, two, two and a half weeks, we'll find out. Yep, we'll see how it comes in.
That that was my question about the HSAs.
Okay. Anything else?
I make a motion for scenario one.
Well, we're not I think we're just discussing this is just a discussion meeting. We'll we'll vote the motion tonight for.
Oh, so we'll vote.
At the council meeting, we'll have we'll have that actual vote, yeah, so. Okay, well, then I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right. Well, I'll make the motion then, and then so we have a motion by Mayor Gordon and a second from Councilman Lundin, all in favor to adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries four zero. We are adjourned.